This is a reminder to all members of the public that's participating in our virtual city council meeting. That if you would like to speak on a particular item during public comment period, please click on raise your hand icon at the bottom of the screen. You'll be prompted to speak up to three minutes when it's your turn. And for those who is participating by telephone and would like to make a public comment, please press star nine to request to speak. Thank you for your participation. Okay, we're ready when you are, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Anne. I will call the meeting to order with the pledge of allegiance. One moment, please. I'll start. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, individual, with liberty and justice for all. Anne, would you do the roll call, please?
Councilmember Barnes?
Here.
Councilmember Moss?
Present.
Councilmember Nathan?
She was just here.
She's here, but she's muted.
Here.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Here.
Mayor Pilch?
Here. Thank you, and that is item two on the agenda. We come to item three, which is the consent calendar. And folks, remember to mute yourself if you're not speaking. The consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless any member of the council or any member of the public wishes to pull an item for discussion. Do any of my council members wish to pull an item for discussion? I'm seeing. Michael, you're gesturing.
I can hear now. Something went wrong there, but I'm good now.
Yeah. Okay. Pete, you want to unmute yourself? You're still muted. If I had host, I could unmute.
Okay. I know I think the buttons that I'm looking at are a little bit different than the ones that are being described. Yeah, I just have a question about three dash five, the Adams Street bids. It's more of a general question about work in Albany.
Okay, three dash five. Councilmember Nathan, did you have something?
Nope.
Okay. And any, Michael, no, and Vice Mayor, no. Okay.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I did want to just ask a question about three dash seven.
Three dash seven, okay. And now I believe that attendees can raise their hand virtually if they wish to pull an item from the consent agenda. I'm not seeing any.
I do not have any hand raised.
No hands raised so far. Give them a second to find the controls if they're looking. And seeing none so far. We can always come back if we see a hand raised later. You know, this can be difficult to find the controls. Okay, we have, we're pulling items three, five, and three, seven. Councilmember Moss, did you want to go ahead with your comment on three, five?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question for Nicole. I'm just wondering what the state of infrastructure projects are in Albany right now. Where this is to get bids, they don't probably want to happen until long after we're out of the shutdown. But are we allowing necessary work on streets, sewer lines, and other utilities to go forward?
Thanks for the question. I'm sorry?
Go ahead, please.
The, the city is evaluating each of our public works infrastructure projects on a case-by-case basis. Given that there is the stay-at-home order, we're very sensitive to individuals predominantly working from home and the fact that some of our projects are rather noisy and can be disturbing. They may also require you to move your vehicles. That being said, we also need to condition that with our obligations to larger regulatory authorities, including the EPA and the Water Quality Control Board. So we're working with those agencies to really determine what our obligations continue to be, including sewer improvement projects, pavement projects, stormwater drainage projects, and the like. So I don't have a clear answer just yet. We're waiting for more information from those regulatory authorities. But you will see projects continuing within town, and those will be defined as essential infrastructure projects.
Okay, thank, thank you. I'm, I'll be curious as to how we go on these projects. I personally believe that if we can be done in a safe, healthy way, we should be going forward on some of these projects if they're funded and they need to happen. This is probably a pretty good time for them to happen. And I don't believe they are creating any public health issues by putting in the kind of things that we need to put in.
Okay. I also will note that I asked staff about the status of Washington Street paving, and that has been postponed for a small amount of time because the Traffic and Safety Commission is still going over that work. But that's certainly a street that I get a lot of questions about. Any other councilmember comments or discussion on item three, five? Seeing, hearing none, move on to item three, seven. I believe Councilmember Nathan wanted to pull that.
Um, yeah, I was wondering, it's kind of, it's framed as supporting a waiver of fees and interest, but it looks like it's more substantively, it's saying that we don't want a blanket deferral of people's obligation to, to pay their taxes. Am I understanding, understanding that correctly?
Steph?
You know, Steph wasn't really part of the drafting of this letter. I don't know, Mr. Mayor, if you have any additional insight, given that it was generated through the mayor's group. I know that some of the city managers worked with their mayors to ensure more flexibility in the request. That's the only information I have.
Yes, thank you. I, I was distracted by the next agenda item. Yeah, so I can speak to that. There was an email chain that went around amongst the mayors. And we did support. We did support some mitigation for people who might have issues with paying their property taxes on time, given the current situation. However, we did also understand that the cities depend a lot on property taxes. And we, in any case, do not want anyone not to pay their property taxes if they're able to on time. But we did support the county providing some relief for those who couldn't. And that was the spirit of the, of the effort, and I'm glad that we were able to involve the city managers in that effort. Yeah, I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, I, I, I think so. I'm, I'm a little concerned about this because I think we'd really like to kind of set a precedent for landlords and banks and everyone who can afford to, to give people a waiver. It would be nice if, if the city could give a blanket waiver. But if, you know, you guys have looked at this and are satisfied that we really can't, that that really can't happen, I guess, I guess we can support this. Is there anyone trying to do a blanket waiver in the legislature? Are we opposing something that someone else is, is proposing to let people pay their property taxes later?
I, I personally do not know of such efforts. This is, I haven't been paying that much attention to those efforts either since I was only involved in this particular effort. But I understand that there, I think there was a lot of concern about going farther than we did in this effort or asking for more than this in the effort due to the revenue stream that property taxes represent. So, but I'm not aware of the other efforts, or any other efforts.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Barnes, looks like you wanted to say something.
Yeah, I just wanted to point out, the governor has been considering doing something to intervene. I don't know what the status of those efforts are, however.
That, that was, had been my impression as well, that the governor was thinking about that. I think we're gonna have to, you know, and I'm, I'm not saying I'm not gonna vote for this or that I want to pull it so I can vote against it or anything. But I think we do need to be conscious, you know, cities are gonna have to do their share. Everybody is gonna have to do a share in this. And people are just hurting terribly with their ability to pay rent or to pay their mortgage. And we're, cities are not gonna be able to, you know, just avoid, avoid the hurt. And I think the sooner we start thinking about how we do our share of the better. But I'm okay with this.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other comments, questions, discussion about this item among the council members? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion on the consent calendar. Oh, let me just check the attendees very quick. It looks like we're good. I'll ask for a motion among the council members on the consent calendar.
I'll move consent.
Hold a second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Will you poll the council, please?
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Pilch?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to agenda item four, good of the city public comment. This is for persons wishing to address the city council on an item that's not on the agenda. Please note that we do limit speakers up to three minutes' time. I'm going to take this time to also make a mayor's statement. And the Vice Mayor also requested that she be able to make a statement, and we did alert the, our fellow council members as well, if they wanted to say anything, they could at this time. So let me begin in a reminder to my fellow council members to mute if you're not speaking. "It's a time of superlatives. Extraordinary and unprecedented are the times we're living in. Surreal comes to mind as well. I hope you and yours continue to be healthy and safe during this time. Please take care of yourselves and those with whom you live. Safely reach out to others, especially the most vulnerable. It is a time to care. I think especially of the most vulnerable, those who have lost their jobs or their livelihoods suddenly and unexpectedly through no fault of their own, and those who have suffered and perished from the tragedies. My heart goes out to all of you. There are hopeful signs that we are doing a good job at slowing the spread, but we must not let up on the measures that professional health officials tell us. Stay home, wash your hands with soap and warm water. When you venture out for essential activities, practice social distancing. Stay away from those who are not your household members by at least six feet at all times. This means when standing or when passing others as well, on sidewalks, in grocery aisles, anywhere. Keep that six-feet distance at all times. These are the most important steps to take. Additionally, officials recommend a face mask when you are out. This is to help prevent, to further help prevent the spread of virus from you to others. You may carry the virus without symptoms, and the face mask might help block the transmission of the virus. There are certainly other steps you can take, but staying home and social distancing are by far the most important. Do not forget these. This is very real. I'll add a personal note that I've been dismayed at some of the reports I've heard and some of the behavior that I've seen while out doing my essential activities of buying food. I don't know if people are not understanding that six feet means six feet at all times or if they're not taking it seriously, but I urge you to take it very seriously. This is very real. The city is here, is here for you. We have declared a state of emergency. Our emergency operations center is online. The council has passed a moratorium on evictions and rent increases. Essential services are being maintained. Additionally, seniors and non-sheltered individuals can connect to services through our hotline Monday through Friday, eight thirty to five, at five one zero, five two four, nine one two two. Five two four, nine one two two. So please, for the love of your fellow residents of this planet, do the right thing, stay home, and continue social distancing. And with that, I'll pass it to the Vice Mayor for her remarks.
Thank you, Mayor, for giving me an opportunity to share my thoughts with you this evening. We are starting a week which is considered by many to be a week of reflection and hope. Sheltering in place gives us a unique opportunity for this. We are doing an exceptional job of washing our hands, staying home, venturing out only for necessities, and wearing protective face coverings, and I applaud each one of you for your efforts. I know it isn't easy, but what you are doing is literally saving lives. We must not waver in this commitment, as this will end, and we want to be able to say that we did all we could and did it with love and compassion. To any of you who are directly suffering from COVID-19, I want to send my personal sympathy. I am so sorry for your pain. Remember, we are practicing physical distancing and not social distancing. Continue to reach out to your friends and neighbors just to check in. An old-fashioned phone call is great for this. The sound of your voice may be a welcome break in their isolation. You know your neighbors better than anyone. If you know of someone who is in need of any services from the city, please let us know. Many in our community are essential workers. To them and their families, we owe our eternal gratitude for the sacrifices they are making for all of us. Thank you to each one of you. However, I don't like the idea that only some are deemed essential. Each one of you and the services you provide are the lifeblood of our community. In thinking of what I miss during this time, it is meeting with friends for coffee or lunch, the wonderful women who keep my house cleaner than I ever would, the men who keep my yard manageable, and as you can see, the woman who cuts my hair. If you are privileged to have these people in your life, please consider showing your appreciation by continuing to pay them if you have the means. Many of our local restaurants are still open for takeout and delivery. These are the businesses that support our schools and other nonprofits whenever we ask. It is our turn to step up and help them as much as we can. Our city staff has done an exceptional job of keeping the city running under difficult circumstances. Thank you all for your efforts. The stress and anxiety you are feeling is very real. Please know help is available if it becomes too overwhelming. Governor Newsom repeatedly uses the phrase "meet the moment." Albany is doing that, and together we will get through this crisis with strength and grace. Thank you.
Thank you, and with that, I'll ask if there's any other council members who wish to, wish to say a few words. Seeing, oh, Councilmember Moss?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, the, my thoughts reflect what you and Vice Mayor McQuaid have already said. But, you know, some of these things bear repeating. We all know what, what we need to do right now, and that is to stay hunkered down when we do go out, keep a safe social distance, and keep our hands clean and keep them off our face. I know that there are reports that in the Bay Area at least, the curb maybe began, it may show signs of beginning to flatten, but now's not the time to give up on these social distancing standards. I think we have to stick to them. I also know that, that the social isolation may be producing feelings of loneliness, anxiety, boredom, and, and all of the above for many of us. But when the pandemic abates, if we have been able to adhere to the social distancing standards and hygienic standards, the odds are that you and your family and friends, me and mine, and our community will be able to survive and stay healthy and once again thrive. So it bears repeating, everyone stay safe, and we'll see when this is all over.
Thank you, Councilmember. Yeah, I think the Vice Mayor had a good point that the, perhaps the term "social distancing" is unfortunate because we do need to reach out to others safely. But it is the physical distance of six feet that is so very important, and please continue to abide by that. Now I'll launch into the rest of the good of the city. Do we have any, any attendees who have their hands raised? And are we sure, okay, we do have one hand raised. We have Harry Chomsky who has his hand raised. Are you able to unmute him?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to read the public comment that came in after 5:00 PM first? Or would you like the attendees to speak first?
Why don't you go ahead and read the comments that came in, and then we'll go with Mr. Chomsky.
Okay. First one, "I'm writing in support of the city council voting to put the issue of ranked choice voting for Albany elections on the November ballot. As you may know, the petition signing was halted for this issue due to the order shelter in place. My understanding is that it had already collected a number of signatures in a short time. I support the initiative because I think it will allow for diverse voices in the electorate to be heard better than our current method does. My concern is that by not allowing this initiative to move forward, that it is equivalent to disenfranchisement under these highly unusual circumstances." Thank you, Brian Martin, Albany resident. Second one. "Dear councilmembers, we request that the city council place a ranked choice voting measure on the November 2020 ballot, so Albany residents can decide for themselves whether this is the voting option they prefer. By taking this action, the council will allow the citizen of Albany the opportunity to learn how the process of ranked choice voting works and enable them to cast a well-informed vote that reflects their preferences. Voting is a core value of our democracy, and it is appropriate that the citizens of Albany, not the city council, decide how elections for council and board of education members should be, should be determined. Recent signature gathering and convincing have made it clear that many residents are interested in finding out more about ranked choice voting and would like to have this opportunity. Sincerely, Julie Winklestein, Winklestein and David Dambey." And the last one. "To the Albany CA City Council, I have read the proposed signage for, oh, I'm sorry. Never mind, this one is for one of the items, so I'll read it when the item comes up."
Understood, so there are only two good of the city comments then?
Correct.
Okay. So it looks like we've unmuted. Go ahead.
Hi, am I unmuted?
Yes.
Hi, this is Harry Chomsky. I'm a resident of Albany and a supporter of ranked choice voting. I'd like to echo the comments that were made in the letters that were just read. Actually, first I wanted to thank you all for finding a way to continue governing. And I know being in a position of decision-making for people in the city must be a huge amount of stress right now, and I really appreciate you all remaining calm and, and keeping things going here and finding a way to make our democratic process work in these unprecedented conditions. And one of the things that is kind of broken by this situation is the signature gathering process. And I hope that the, and in fact, the council has a way to rectify this. We had a, the group that was gathering signatures for the ranked choice measure had a process underway that was very successful and was on track to succeed. And I hope the council will see fit to make democracy continue to work in these unusual conditions and put the measure on the ballot. Whether you support it or not, I'm sure there are some on the council who believe ranked choice voting is a good idea and some who believe it's a bad idea. But I hope that regardless of your personal belief, you will agree that this is something that should be decided by the residents of Albany when they vote in November. Thank you.
Thank you. I do not see any more members of the public with their hands raised. Can you confirm, Anne?
Yes, that was it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, seeing no other members of the public for good of the city, we'll move on to the next item, which is council subcommittee reports and reports on, also reports on appointed representation and other meetings and events. Is there any council member who would like to go first? Or if no one is ready, I can go for, oh, Councilmember Moss, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, my only report is for something that I'm doing, but I believe all the other council members are also doing. And, and I'm hoping that they are also finding when they're reaching out to seniors in Albany that, that for the most part, they're all doing very well. They, I think they've gotten used to this, you know, hanging in their house or apartment or wherever they may be when I call them. And it's heartening to hear this. So I don't know what others' experience are, but I've been calling every week since we started this a couple of weeks ago. And for the most part, the seniors I connect up with are happy to hear from us and, and are doing okay.
Thank you, Councilmember. Just because you're next in my order here, Vice Mayor, would you like to go?
Sure, as usual, I'm a little confused as to where we are. Do you want reports on any meeting or activity that we've done basically at this point?
I, I, I think, I think if you maybe just, why don't we just do it all at once? You can identify meetings, there are appointed representation, and then list your other meetings as well.
I think basically minor, other, go in the other meeting category. I will certainly agree with Councilmember Moss that in calling seniors, they're extremely appreciative. I've heard, and they all seem to be doing well. I've heard from several that say, yep, you know, call me again, we can chat. And I've heard from others that are like, no, I've got more help than I need. Don't call me again. I've also participated in many Zoom conferences on small business relief, different webinars on things that are germane to where we are right now. I've listened to several calls for elected officials that have come out of the White House. Last week, the League of California Cities had our policy committee meetings via WebEx, I believe. So I attended both the community services and the public safety committees. And I've continued to work with the mayor and the business leaders in, in trying to help our small businesses as much as possible. I think that's it for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Nathan, would you like to go next? Oops, you're muted. Go ahead.
Am I unmuted? Okay, good. Yeah, I've also been on those calls, the meetings, the Zooms, and also been making calls to our seniors and our small, excuse me, our small businesses. I also wanted to mention- I also wanted to mention, uh, at our last meeting, I had, uh, raised the issue that we still had horse racing going on, uh, at Golden Gate Fields. And I had a lot of communication with the Alameda County Public Health Department about that and why, why that was continuing. Not, not to oppose it, but to be sure that if it was continuing, it was continuing under public health oversight. But ultimately, uh, and I'm not actually sure. I think that, uh, the district attorney for Alameda County got involved in this as well and, um, had the, uh, the racing portion of the work down there, uh, suspended for the time being. It's important to understand there is still training going on, even though, you know, spring training has been suspended and other kinds of, uh, human athletic training has been suspended. The training continues at Golden Gate Fields. And that's, that's something of a concern because it does mix together the backstretch community with the commuting community. So there is greater risk of, uh, transmission of the virus. We have some 400 people, uh, living in the backstretch community, not in Albany. They're in Berkeley, but they make their living, uh, based on activity in Albany. So I think that we do have a responsibility, uh, to try to be sure that they're safe. So I think that this is likely, uh, to continue to be an issue that is going to need some oversight and potentially concerned by the council. But, uh, for right now, the racing, uh, portion has been suspended.
Thank you, uh, council member Barnes, do you have anything?
I'll just say that I'm also continuing to contact seniors as the other council members are. And in general, they all seem to be pretty well taken care of, but do appreciate the calls.
Thank you, and thank you for doing that. Going on to my meetings, uh, in terms of appointed representation, we did have a mayor's conference, uh, and that was a little touch and go. But, uh, we decided to have it. We did get a presentation at that time, on the 11th, I believe it was, from the, um, from the, uh, from the, uh, um, I can't remember her title, but, uh, Director Chol, I believe it is, from Alameda County Public Health. So that was an important meeting. Uh, we also ended up talking a lot about, uh, homeless issues, uh, which was, which was very good. Uh, I also attended in, at East Bay Community Energy, uh, what ended up to be mostly an emergency meeting. Most of my meetings ended up being abbreviated, uh, due to the circumstances. And the most, in the East Bay Community Energy meeting, we just gave, uh, uh, extra temporary authority to the CEO to enact business if we could not meet. Uh, Alameda County Transportation Committee also met and the Waste Management Authority met as well. Also somewhat abbreviated meetings. I believe, uh, and this, these are all the meetings since the last time, uh, I'm reported on meetings, uh, which I think is, uh, a month ago. Uh, I believe that, uh, council member, Vice Mayor McQuaid and Council Member Moss also filled in on me, filled in for me on one EBC meeting and, um, uh, Waste Management Authority meeting. They might have already reported on that. Thank you for doing that. Uh, also have been part of a number of calls through the county where, uh, the issue of, um, the horse racing was, was raised among, among many other, uh, questions and issues. Uh, a meeting with Sierra Club, uh, representatives about plastics, census ambassador training, uh, ballot measure meeting with county officials about possible homeless ballot measure, uh, the chancellor's community breakfast, small business meetings as the, the vice mayor mentioned, League of California City meetings, and the Alameda County Mayor's homeless working group, uh, meetings. And likely since it's been a long time, I've, I've forgotten a few. And did anyone else forget any meetings, Vice Mayor?
I didn't, I didn't really forget, but I, I want to sort of repeat. We've all mentioned calling the seniors, which is wonderful, but for the greater community, if, if there are people out there that you know that, that need our support, please let us know. We sort of know the people we know and we're always concerned about the people we don't know. And many of you in the neighborhood, to know your neighbors. And if there's someone who's just needs a friendly phone call, please let us know. We're more than happy, all five of us are more than happy to call, check in, see what they need, see how we can help them.
Yeah, thank you for that suggestion, Vice Mayor. Okay, uh, moving on, uh, past reports, council member reports. We have the city manager report. Uh, city manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to try and share my screen.
Wonderful.
Do you see the website?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you. This is my first share here. So I wanted to quickly to go over some things that I hope look familiar to everyone and reiterate where we're housing information because, as you know, it's a fluid situation. Our website continues to be a hub for information with regular updates as resources become available. Again, it's albanyca.org/coronavirus. You also see it at the top of this page and at the bottom of this page. So it's very easy to locate. The pages have been organized, so the information is hopefully easier to find too. We have done a significant amount of, um, outreach, uh, primarily through our e-news. If you aren't signed up for this, please go to our website. It's a few clicks and you're logged in and you get these automatically in your email box. We are sending this out currently twice a week, the Wednesday edition and the Friday edition. The Wednesday edition is typically specialized. You'll see this Wednesday, it'll be focused on local businesses, small businesses, and linking those businesses with the greater opportunities for funding and resources, both at the state and federal levels. Uh, we have the social media platforms you see on the screen and we are making sure to keep those regularly updated as well. The first thing we did was a postcard mailed citywide. I hope everyone received this. This continues to be extremely factual and current information. City services continue to remain available. We're just doing things a little bit differently now, but staff is available through the more electronic or telephone, uh, manners for essential city services. You also, hopefully when you're out getting your exercise and keeping your social distance, will see some of these posters in our big belly containers. And again, it's just trying to put that local flavor. We're in this together and this is the Albany-specific information we have available for our community. The banners are up around town as well. And it's important that census information continues to be promoted. This is something I'm really proud of in running and the signs going to unshelve and well. We continue to answer the staff our size in full spaces. It's completed in within the current situation.
Of our names on, if, and I know they've done it for September 11th and Pearl Harbor Day. It's, it seems a bit random and I think if we know they're going to do it other times, that should be included in the text. If that was one-time efforts, then we cannot include it.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think that's a very important point. But I think I'll, I'll comment on that. I don't, it's more of a comment than a question, I think.
Yeah. So I think you did have a few questions in there with the city manager or city attorney. Would you like to address those?
Sure, those sound rather, um, straightforward. Mala, city attorney, I'll, I'll go ahead and take the lead here. Um, yes, the text can be anything that, that you'd like in terms of the font and the size. Uh, this is just a mock-up, so you get a sense of what it would look like overall. But yes, it, it can be, I think you said broaden. Do you mean bigger, larger?
No, I mean more, more depth.
Oh, um, to some degree, yeah. Figure out the actual size of the sign and, and work with that, but I think we could add a little bit. Yeah.
I think in the comment part, I, I could comment more on that.
Okay, sure.
Okay, you got your questions answered. Any other questions from, uh, council members? Until, uh, and publicly, we're about to go to you, uh, for your comments or questions, comments or remarks. And seeing no other questions from council members, uh, why don't we let, uh, Anne, uh, ask the public speakers to, uh, come up to the virtual podium?
Okay, I have two, uh, I have several raising their hand, but let me read the one that came into, um, came in as an email between five and, and right now. Okay. "To the Albany CA City Council, I have read the proposed signage for the Albany Hill Cross. As you may recall, I am an Albany homeowner who has been involved in this issue from the beginning. And I have several times spoke, spoken against the cross at council meetings during the open comment period. Below are my comments and problem with the proposed signage. Option one, Rochelle's statement is accurate and points out the city council was infiltrated by the Lions Club and that the federal court have ruled that the presence of the cross in a public park is unconstitutional, but that the easement is valid. Problem is that the statement is too long and very few people will read it. I agree with her statement and I really like it, but unfortunately, we are in the limited attention span. Sound by era. Option two, in 1973, the city of Albany accepted ownership of this portion of Albany Hill Park with an easement allowing for the Albany Lions Club to conduct maintenance of the cross before you. Some might read this to imply that the easement originated when the city accepted ownership and that the city granted the easement. When, as we all know, the easement was granted before the city was granted ownership. Okay, so the easement was granted only a few minutes before the city accepted ownership, but still some might misunderstand this. Also, it says nothing about the ruling that the federal district court held that the cross's presence in a public park is unconstitutional. Option three, I basically like this. No doubt that it will catch people's eyes and they will read it, but I have problem with some of the wording. When the property was transferred to the city to become a public park, the Albany Lions Club was granted an easement. This definitely implies that the city granted the easement. This should actually read something like, "Before the property was transferred to the city, the Albany Lions Club was granted an easement by the previous owner, an Albany city councilman who was a Lions Club member." The section legal status is murky. On June 15, 2018, District Judge William Alsop issued an order granting in part and denying in part the party's cross motions for summary judgment. In 2019, the Federal Court of Appeals held up Judge Alsop's, uh, ruling. This gives absolutely no indication what happened. This section should, at least in its public park. It should probably also say that Alsop ruled that the easement was valid and that the circuit court upheld that decision. Boy, Torquington, that's it. And now we have, we have the public. The member of the public with the phone number ending in 660. Go ahead. Hello? Remember the public that with the phone number ending in 660, your, your turn is up.
Hello, this is Preston Jordan. Thank you very much for holding this meeting virtually. I was wondering, could a sign be erected in front of the cross legally? Setting aside the question of funding a sign, for instance, that is of sufficient size that the cross cannot be seen for most of the community? That speaks out of my question. And my, my understanding is the easement is only for maintenance. It is not an easement that assures that whatever is maintained on that easement would be visible from the city itself.
Uh, I, can you, uh, clarify your question a bit? I'm uncertain still what you're asking. You're asking if something can be placed that might block the cross or?
Sure, yes. We could call it a sign. You can call it whatever you want. But yes, could we basically block the view of the cross? I framed it in the question of could we put up a sign in front of the cross, uh, in line with this particular agenda item?
Okay. Thank you. Uh, could staff comment on that question?
I can jump in and take that one. Um, it wouldn't be my recommendation to do anything at this point to infringe on the easement. What we're recommending now is to adopt, um, some sort of signage that makes it very clear that the council does not endorse the cross and/or any particular religion, but not to actually infringe on the easement.
Thank you. Okay, Anne, next member of the public?
Next member, um, number ending in 280. Go ahead.
They show to me as muted. Oh, there we go.
This is Robert Nichols. I'm the attorney for the Albany Lions Club. First of all, I'm very concerned. I forwarded a letter to the city council at approximately 4:20 this afternoon, which, uh, according to your webpage indicates that it would have been more than ample time for it to be circulated to the council in advance of this hearing. I'm troubled that the only letter that appears to have been received was not that from the Lions Club or from me. Can you tell me if my letter was received?
Uh, I can tell you that I did receive it. I'm uncertain I, of what the recipient list was, but, uh, I personally did receive it.
Is, is there some reason then why a, why my letter is not being read along with the others?
My, my understanding is, uh, go ahead, Anne. Why don't you explain?
So, uh, just a clarification for all the public that's listening in. Um, it is stated on our agenda that, um, all, all written comment received by 5:00 PM on the day of the meeting will be provided to city council and posted on city website. Written comment received between 5:00 PM and the close of public comment period will be read or summarized as part of the meeting. So because the email was received before 5:00 and it was forwarded to the city council and the city council, uh, most likely had a chance to, um, read the public comment.
Well, that's interesting. So by not obeying the rules, I stand a better chance of having my letter read publicly than having the council quietly consider it. I'm concerned, uh, tonight is, the council's discussing publishing a deceptive statement containing falsehoods, half-truths and material omissions. And it's apparently doing this in retaliation for the Lions Club's refusal to relinquish a valuable property right to the city, for having the audacity to stand up to the city when the city engaged in misconduct, for asserting the Lions constitutional rights, and for having the incredible tenacity for winning the lawsuit, both in the federal district court and in the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal. This is really a sour grapes type of a motion. And, uh, I want to suggest to the city that, uh, the Lions Club won this, let's get over it and let's move forward. Not contained in the materials is the fact that the city unlawfully ordered the utility service to the cross to be disconnected. While the city claimed that it was unsafe, it was the responsibility of PG&E, not the Lions Club, to make sure that the line was safe. And the line was, PG&E ultimately took responsibility for the line and replaced the line at their own expense, at no cost to the Lions Club. Ultimately, the city Ultimately, the city acknowledged the PG&E's responsibility and that's how the line was, line was allowed to be restored. At the end of the day, the city paid $125,000 in damages and attorney's fees for this misconduct. At the same time, the city sued the Lions Club claiming the easement was invalid and that the cross violated the Establishment Clause of the United States Constitution. The court found the easement is valid and the court found that the city, not the Lions Club, is violating the Establishment Clause. The court said, interestingly, while the city portrays itself as a victim of the easement, the fact is that the city must bear responsibility. The easement clause runs against public, I'm sorry, the Establishment Clause runs against public entities, not private parties. After the city acquired the land burdened with the cross and turned it into a public park.
I'm sorry, your three minute is up?
Well, let me just conclude by saying that I hope that the city council will act with the good faith and intelligence that the cities, citizens of the city of Albany believed that you had when they elected you and not place this vindictive and vigilant placard in, in these, in, in or near the cross.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay, is there any other public comment? I believe, I don't see any others who have not already gone. Is that your understanding, Ann?
Yes. No more.
Okay. All right, great. Thank you. Okay, thank you for that. I'll bring it back to council. And just want to clarify that the, Mr. Nichols may be, believe he's, may believe he's breaking the rules, but the, I believe the intention of reading items that came after 5:00 was that the council would, did not have time to review them and so therefore they're more like oral public comment and that's why we don't read those before 5:00 and we do read those after 5:00. Is, is, is that correct, staff?
Yes.
I'm getting, I'm getting a nod and, and a, a yes from Ann. Thank you from the city clerk. Okay. Who would like to start on council comments? Councilmember Nation? Still muted. There you go.
Okay. Can you hear me? All right, good.
Yes.
I really like the educational plaque. The, what's the story with this cross? I, I agree with Vice Mayor McQuaid that maybe something, maybe that's a little bit casual. What's the story with this? I, I don't know. But I had a couple of other issues that I wanted to touch on. One is, and I, I think the language in general is good. There is one important factual issue, which is, it says that the, the Lions Club claims the right to illuminate the cross around the Christmas and Easter holidays. And that's not correct. They, they claim the right to illuminate the cross at their discretion and including Christian religious holidays, but also in particular Pearl Harbor Day and 9/11. And some of the feedback that we had about objections to what they were doing were not only that the cross serves as a continuation of the municipal cross tradition, but also that it's being, there is, seems to be a particular focus on illuminating the cross at times when the United States has experienced attack by people who may not share the Christian faith. So I think it's important that we elucidate, that we, we do something with that language. Also, I think it's important, the, there already is a sign on the cross and it is the Lions Club International symbol. And so I would be inclined not to say Albany Lions Club, but just to say Lions Club. And, and I think that we should probably contact, because this is signage that is going to be added to the existing Lions Club International signage, we should probably let them know that this is going up. Lions Club International as opposed to the Albany Lions Club. And finally, I very much liked the idea that Brian Martin suggested, which is to have a Q R symbol for people who want more information. I think that there's really going to be two kinds of people who look at this. People who are not interested in it really at all and are not going to read even this much information. And then there are going to be people who are really interested in wondering what is going on. And I think that having a symbol that they could scan with their phone and, and read more about the history and what happened and so forth. I think that that would be valuable. And, and I wrote a longer thing, which could be the thing that the Q R leads to or something like it. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I'm just going to pause there for a moment. I noticed that there is an attendee who raised his hand. I believe this is the same attendee though, whose letter was already read. But this attendee might not have understood. And, but he, he is still raising his hand. So can I ask that you unmute him? Oh, now his hand is down. Okay. His hand is back up. So can I ask that you unmute him? And, and sir, well, before you do, sir, we did read your letter, but perhaps you didn't quite understand the, the, the protocol. Could you, if you have anything to add to your letter, could you add it very, very briefly?
Okay, I, I, I hope I'm unmuted now. Yes, well, I wanted to ask the city attorney how putting up Mr. Jordan's lock, let's say quote sign that would block the view of the cross from, from down below, how that would be violating the, the terms of the easement? It is not going to prevent the Lions Club from having access for main, maintenance of the cross. So how does that violate the easement? I mean, you could, you could, that's my question.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. City attorney, could you, would you care to comment?
I, I don't really have anything more to add than what I had previously indicated that we're not looking to encroach on the easement. We're just looking to explain a little bit of the background and to make it very clear that we're not endorsing the cross or any particular religion.
Okay, thank you. And councilmember Nation, you wanted to comment to that?
Yeah, I just realized there, there was one additional comment I was going to make. I think it should be clear that we're not preferring religion over non-religion either. When we say any particular religion, I think it might make sense to say, you know, or, or lack of religion, that we're, we, we want to be clear that we're, 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 we embrace our atheist and humanist and all of our, our citizens, even those who, one does not need to have a religion to be embraced by Albany.
Okay, thank you, councilmember. Who would like to go next? I'm muted, so councilmember Moss, I saw your hand first.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I think as, as, as one along with Rochelle, who were the original councilmembers to go out and, and speak with the Lions Club and probably got this whole ball rolling in the, in the modern times. I, you know, I, I, comments about and really find fascinating. But, you know, for a sign, I think the basic graphics need to be clear and, and, you know, relatively simple. The, the other comments, let's see, well, I'll just go down here. I did read Mr. Nichols' email. I think we all got it. We all probably have more time than we're used to having, so we are able to go through all these emails before a council meeting. And I'll take his comments. This is what he believes and this is what his clients believe, but I, I don't think there's any reason why we shouldn't be doing this. You know, just more details on the, on the details, I mean, on Judge Alsop's ruling would be good. Also, this idea of adding our names to the council statement. You know, one thing is things happen and, you know, if somebody get any kind of statement that, a while, we have to have a big clear area in front of it that allows them to shine it all over the city. I'm personally not a big fan of putting a sign in front of it, but I'd love to see that big bear spot below the, the cross be filled with trees, you know, fast growing trees. And I would still have not heard to my mind an explanation. We're not working on that tonight and that's, that's for a future discussion. But in the meantime, I think this, a sign, much like what we see in the, in that last representation, the, the story of the cross or whatever, you know, would work. And ultimately, we may have to go to either eminent domain or buying or selling the Lions Club nine square feet so they can have their, their cross up there. But again, a discussion for another time. In the meantime, let's put something up there that represents our view of what's been going on. You're, you're muted, I believe.
Councilmember Barnes, I think I saw your hand go up right after councilmember Moss's hand.
Right, can you hear me? I think I'm unmuted now.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I concur with Rochelle. I think, I like the educational sign. I think the title is a little too casual. I think, I also think Roy's, and I'm sorry if I get Roy's last name wrong, Torkington. I think Roy's comments about the accuracy are good and I'd like to make sure that we make this sign as accurate as possible. I do think we have an obligation to the community to put something up there to explain to them why the cross is there. And I'm certainly, as a resident of Albany, Mr. Nichols certainly is welcome to his opinions, but I don't give his opinion any more weight than I do any other citizen of Albany. So I, I will consider his opinion along with the other 18,000 people in town who might have an opinion about this cross and the sign. But I think we should move forward. I'd like to see a draft, another draft of this. And this is not the, the place to, you know, wordsmith a different draft, but I would like to see the staff take the comments under consideration and give us another draft of this sign. You know, maybe some, not final language, but, you know, a better idea of what the final graphics might look like as well. That's my comment.
Thank you, councilmember. And Vice Mayor, I believe your comments are next.
Thank you. I, I was sort of struck today by the irony is, as we talk about the distancing ourselves but being community and all working together and all of those wonderful platitudes that we've been saying for the last few weeks, that the cross has lit tonight and divides us once again. So we have sort of this interesting thing of, on one hand, talking about how we're united going forward, but we're really not. And I, I find that to be unfortunate. I think you're muted.
Thank you. Trying to follow protocol here. I think you might want to outline them. I am concerned about how we're going to do wordsmithing at this stage. And I think that maybe if we're, if as a council we decide in general terms about changes we make, I'm imagining we'll want to bring this back for another, another look see once we decide the format and then the general content, then we can bring it back, given other comments about wording changes from the, from the council. So I would say, you know, kind of briefly say what you're, what, what changes you want to make or, you know, don't go through every word maybe, but we do need to know generally what sort of changes you would like to see made.
Okay. So we're using the, what is the story with this cross template? And under the history of the cross, where it says the easement is around the cross, I think that's a little vague. I think to remove the phrase around the cross and I would change it to around the holidays, for holidays. And if we want to add other language there, it seems like things are changing. That's probably important. In the what now section, I would add federal court ruling because I think that is an important piece of this. I like the Q R code. I would simply link it to the website. I think there's quite a bit of information on the website and I think that's a really good link to that. And I think the section on legal status is a little bit vague. And I think, again, Mr. Martin gave some good language and maybe we could just incorporate what he said. I can read that if you'd like. His, his suggestion is, let me see. In 2017, the Albany Lions Club filed a lawsuit in federal court against the city of Albany. The city responded with a counterclaim requesting removal of the cross due to its violation of state and federal constitutions. On June 15th, District Judge Alsop found the line's easement valid, but the cross in the public park is a violation of the Establishment Clause of the U.S. Constitution and is perceived to be an endorsement by the city of one religion over others and other non-religions. I think what's stated on the thing is a little bit vague. And that's why I liked sort of the more in-depth language. And I think that's all I have at this point.
Okay. All right. Let me state my remarks and then we can go back for more discussion about what we think about some of these changes. It looks like there is a consensus and I was going to support as well the educational signage. Thank you, staff, for that. I think actually it already looks pretty darn good. But, you know, of course, the graphics and font changes might be necessary to, to make it really popper, to make it readable enough. But I do like that. And I actually do like the statement or, or the, the headline, the title, what's the story with this cross? I think it's shortened to the point and it says immediately to someone who comes up to this that there is something wrong with this cross being here, as I think we all agree. And it also, it also, I think it, it, it answers, you know, the fact, it goes to answering why, never mind, I, I, I mean, I'm not going to say what I was going to state about that, but I think that the Q R code, I think we're all in agreement about that as well. I think it's important, I like the pointing out the conflicts of interest. I think that was in councilmember Nation's version where we point out how the Lions Club was, Lions Club members were city council members and were voting on a Lions Club concern when they're voting, when they're doing, voting for this, 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 this city action as well. And I think that, you know, the Q R code can certainly go to the city website, but I don't think, you know, perhaps we can do what we've done tonight with the statement from various council members and, and include statement from, predict, personal statements from council members if, if they. council members if they so desire to have one. I think that's one way of handling that. But otherwise, I think that it might be tough to pick exact words. I think we've hit it pretty much right, but if, if folks want to make some word changes, like the vice mayor or want to incorporate, incorporate some of Mr. Martin's changes, I'm probably all, I'll fine with that. So let me bring it back to the council and see what they think about some of the wording changes that have been, if, if there is a consensus about the educational signage and what people think about the wording changes suggested so far. And I see councilmember Moss has his hand up, so why don't you go ahead first?
Thank you. You know, I'm wondering whether we could have a subcommittee with councilmember Nathan and, and somebody else, perhaps yourself, Mr. Mayor, get, work on, on those changes. I think we're all pretty much in agreement with what, what we envision this sign saying. And I think we're also pretty much in agreement that there's a lot of history here that would be great to, to, for some people anyway, to be able to get to and look at, although it's not going to be able to fit on a sign that we're likely to put up. So perhaps that would be the, the best way to, to get to something that we could all vote on at a later date, rather than trying to do this over a Zoom council meeting, which I think by normal standard Zoom meetings go extra long because it's a little challenging to communicate. But would anyone else think that that's a good idea?
So your suggestion is a subcommittee to work out the further details then? Okay. And then councilmember Nathan, you had something, some remarks?
No, I was just saying that, that idea is excellent. That makes a lot of sense.
Okay, great. Any other councilmember? Nothing from councilmember Barnes, vice mayor, anything? Okay, so I'm happy to join that subcommittee if the councilmember Nathan agrees and work on the, the details. Any other direction then from the councilmembers to us about things we shouldn't forget? Vice Mayor?
I don't, I have a question now about process. I'm, I'm happy to send you my thoughts, but I don't want to send them to both of you. Is it okay if I send to staff?
Yeah, do you have any comment, city attorney, about the, the process on how we might avoid?
Vice Mayor McQuaid, are there a lot more comments you have, or?
No, basically what I said.
Oh, yeah, no, then not a problem if you're just giving us more detail about what you said tonight. And I took notes about what you said as well.
Okay, so should I send it to, who should I send it to?
You can send it to staff. You can send it to either me or Nicole.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, can I also add to that? With assuming the council approves the subcommittee to work on this, I would request that that be in coordination with staff, obviously with our city attorney, but also with staff that would be developing the, the format of the sign, because we'll come to a point, will there be too much text? And I want to make sure you have the parameters for that.
Absolutely, yeah. And we can make that part of the motion, or it's certainly understood by me that, that's what I would have wanted to do anyway. Great, so it sounds like there is consensus that we should have this subcommittee to move forward on the final language and format that we'll bring back to the council. Would someone like to make that motion?
So moved?
Second.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. All right, councilmember Moss moved and Nathan second, the formation of a subcommittee of the mayor, myself, Pilch, Mayor Pilch, and councilmember Nathan to work on final language and format to bring back to the council for approval for the Alvin Cross sign.
Councilmember Barnes?
Yes.
Councilmember Moss?
Yes.
Councilmember Nathan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McQuaid?
Yes.
Mayor Pilch?
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you, city clerk. Reviewing the agenda, I believe we're down to the issue of future agenda items. Are there any councilmembers wishing to propose future agenda items? I see councilmember Moss has his hand up. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I had, let's see, let me find that page. Okay, so there was a couple of things, but perhaps the first one, I'm, and this is in reference to the social distancing that we're doing as we're walking around Albany. I'm wondering whether we should be asking the Transportation Commission to hold a Zoom meeting and perhaps come up with some best practices or standards about who has the right of way on the sidewalk. What I, what I've been noticing when I walk down a sidewalk or narrow sidewalk, somebody ends up going, if this doesn't seem too frivolous, and maybe this isn't needed, but very often it occurs to me that you're, you have a certain amount of endangerment on somebody walking down a sidewalk if they go out in the street and they're not facing traffic. So maybe just some basic, simple standards around who would have the right of way. If you're walking with the flow of traffic on the right side of the street, maybe you could have a right of way, something to that effect. You know, perhaps this couldn't happen quickly enough by transportation to get back to us before everything's lifted, but we don't know when that's going to happen and whether it might happen again. The other thing, which particularly in my calls to seniors, is that people are very concerned about practices in stores. And I'm wondering if the Transportation Commission might want to take a look at that, maybe make it some advisory comments on making store lanes one way, which, which might help in that. It's, it's kind of minor. It's sort of, you know, perhaps we can just let it go naturally out there, but it does occur to me that a lot of people, you know, this, this, you're constantly being confronted with this decision of, you know, who, who moves out in the street and who should have a right of way. And so that was, that was my, my big thought on that.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right. And thank you. Thank you for that suggestion. Another possibility perhaps is that there might already be guidance out there from the county or the state or federal level, and we could also ask staff if they've, are able to, if they've seen that or able to compile that. Might be another way to go rather than convening the subcommittee, but I'm certainly okay with either. Thank you for that. Is there another future agenda item? Councilmember Barnes, are you raising your hand or, no, okay, some, doing something else? Anyone else with a future agenda item? I will say that we have heard from the public that they would like to, certain members of the public would like to put ranked choice voting on and the ballot in November. So I imagine we should have that as an agenda item at some point in, in the future, before November certainly. And we, we'll be thinking about that. Anyone else? And if there's no other future agenda items, and that's the last item on the agenda, thank you very much for, everyone for bearing with us through this virtual meeting, and hopefully we'll be able to see each other sometime in the nearer, nearer than farther future in person. And take care, everybody. Stay safe, stay well. Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
Take care.